Just a sound check. Somebody Becky, can you hear us okay? Are you on Becky? Want to make sure from him? And yeah. Okay, good. Thumbs up. All right. So, welcome again. We will start with our city and state public reports. With the Honolulu Park Department.
Yeah, hello, Captain Doug, new kind of fire station. I'm gonna read the statistics for May 24. So last month we had one nuisance fire, one activated alarm, no fire. Sixty-one medicals, one motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, and one motor vehicle crash collision. Now, for the safety tip of the month. A boy is fire prone with a year-round risk of wildfire. Hazardous weather conditions, especially during hurricane season, which is now June 1st to November 30th. Will increase the risk. HPH encourages everyone to proactively protect yourself, your family and your property for advanced planning, understanding and preparation. In the event of a power outage, remember these safety tips. Build a fourteen-day disaster supply kit. Take in the inventory of the items you need that rely on electricity. Specifically, plan for batteries and other alternative power sources. Know your medical needs, especially if you have medical devices that need electricity or refrigerated medicines. Using appliances during power outages, avoid carbon monoxide poisoning. Generators, camp stoves, charcoal grills should always be used outdoors and at least twenty feet away from windows. And turn off or disconnect your appliances, equipment or electronics that may be damaged during possible monetary power circuits. For more safety tips and detailed information, you can visit ready.gov/power-outages. Also have the personal wildland fire action guide. It's on the website if anybody wants to.
All right, thank you, Captain. Any questions for the Honolulu Park Department? Person or online? Not seeing any. Thank you very much, Captain. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming down. All right, that's what would say to report is from the Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening. Lieutenant Nishimura from HPD District Seven. The following is the monthly statistics for the month of May. Motor vehicle theft nineteen, burglary nine, theft thirty-four. UEMV or car break-ins were nine, with total calls for service six thousand four hundred and fifty. Our safety tip for the month is preventing auto theft. And these are some of the things to do to prevent auto theft. Turn off the engine and lock your vehicle and secure it, even if you're going to be gone for a few minutes. Please secure your car keys at all times, especially when you're at the beach. We do see an increase in auto thefts of people having their keys unattended when they are at the beach. Keep valuables out of sight in the car. For example, put them in the trunk. Don't, again, hide the keys in the vehicle. Don't leave the engine running, even if you leave the car for a minute or two. And then lastly, don't leave any important documents in the car, for example, the title of the car. That's how you can have an unauthorized person gain access to the title and then transfer the car into their name and stealing the car that way. But that will be our report for the month. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Lieutenant. Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? From anyone here in person, the board? Anyone online? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Lieutenant. If you have a couple of minutes, if you don't mind staying on, if you have some time. We have some folks regarding some legal vehicle traffic. So if you do have a couple of minutes to stay online, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. Thanks very much. All right, our next public report is from the Board of Water Supply. We have the Board of Water Supply there. All right. Okay, seeing none. All right, so if there are no objections, I'd like to take an item on the agenda out of order. And that would be for the certificates of accomplishments to the valedictorian and salutatorian of Kamaki Christian School and Sacred Hearts Academy. We are very happy to be able to honor the valedictorian of Kamaki Christian School, which is Grace Bart, and the salutatorian of Kamaki Christian School, which is Kaiponoliao. And the valedictorian of Sacred Hearts Academy, which is Madison Iwasita. And the salutatorian of Sacred Hearts Academy, which is Sabrina Oh. So we do have certificates for them if they are present. So I'll ask if the valedictorian of Kamaki Christian School, Grace Barton, is here. Is Grace here? Grace, if you don't mind coming up. Grace, congratulations. We'd also like to honor the salutatorian of Kamaki Christian School, which is Kaiponoliao. Congratulations. Okay, and I believe the valedictorian of Sacred Hearts Academy is currently on a trip. That's Madison Iwasita. Congratulations to her. And is the salutatorian of Sacred Hearts Academy here Sabrina here? Congratulations to all of you. We just wanted to say a job well done on behalf of the community. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay, so we're going to return to our agenda, which is for public input, limited to three minutes each. And these are items not listed on the agenda. No board action may be taken, but the board is here to listen to any public input. Is there any public input this evening? Ma'am?
My name is Dori Takamura. On April 28th, 2024, Hawaii Baptist Church, located on 1047 Twenty-First Avenue, approved an agreement with AT&amp;T to build a fifty-foot stealth cell tower with an antenna mounted on the roof of their sanctuary. I, as well as some others, object to the cell tower being built there. Radio frequency waves emitted from the cell tower may bring potential detrimental health effects in this established suburban neighborhood and people who attend the church. The Hawaii State Department of Health Biological Branch states that, quote, "Quiet networks do not expect to cause direct health effects. More research is needed. Research into these areas is still ongoing," unquote. In other words, there are no conclusive studies that show radio frequency waves have health effects. But there are no conclusive studies that show radio frequency waves do not have an effect on one's health. Let's say that AT&amp;T should respond to and fight what makes your purpose and motive for building a cell tower at Hawaii. Questions that the church should respond to, as according to the Telecommunications Act of 1996, if AT&amp;T is not liable, once built, only prepared for potential litigation by neighbors due to health and health. According to the Middle Class Taxant B and Job Creator Act of 2012, once built, several cell towers can go up an additional twenty feet from the outside. According to HUD, when evaluating neighboring property, appraisers are instructed to note and comment on the impact of market development resulting from the toxicity to certain hazards and diseases, unquote. Unlike telephone poles, cell towers are multiple component that can cause damage or collapse. If this happens, does the church need to pay for regulations, repairs and pollution, oil damage, damage to neighboring property and worker entities? What do you think we have a low impact analysis done by the neighborhood? The council to all of you thinks, would you purchase a home next to the block's property with five cell towers? Is it okay to have potential cell tower waste of collapse that has simply occupied suburban? Thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Saktamora. Back to the board. Thank you. Any other community input, public input? Yes, go ahead. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Thank you, Chair. Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Cyrus How. I'm here representing Waite Green Growth and a project that we're leading for Follow the Drum, that takes place in the Alawai watershed where we're providing free rainwater assessments to all property owners, managers, so residential, commercial, or nonprofit, nonprofit public properties. Any type to quantify the amount of rainwater that each property is experiencing in order to give a recommendation for the best size rain barrel or rain garden, basically catchment solution in order to mitigate the runoff that we see polluting all of our streams, the Alawai Canal every time it rains hard, while simultaneously recharging our aquifer, which is where we get all of our drinking water. Hundred percent of our drinking water is from our groundwater, so it's really important that we recharge it every opportunity we get rather than letting it go into the streets and the storm drains. So I'll leave some of our flyers of kind of by the entrance here for you all to take. The Alawai watershed territory that we cover is everywhere. We're actually just outside the eastern border, but it's everywhere, basically Diamond Head to Punch Bowl. So Palolo to Makiki from the coral ridge tops down to the beach. So take a look at the flyer book. It takes about thirty, forty-five minutes. Our team of interns comes out with their iPad, uses an app, does some measurements around the house, and we send a report within the next week with our findings. And then from there, it's a little bit easier to navigate how to get the right type of green stormwater infrastructure, whether that's a rain barrel, rainwater, or something else. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Hope to be in touch. Bye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any other community public input? Yes, are you here for Lehele? Okay, if you can introduce yourself, please.
Hello, board, chair and members. I need your help. I need a resolution. It's been happening for at least twenty-five years that I've been a resident there, but goes back even more when a current employee at Lehele School, when he was going to school, he said the problem of the intersection on Eighth and Manaloa being blocked up sometimes all the way to Sixth Avenue was a problem back then, too. And they're still doing the best that they can, which is, I'm not really sure, because there really isn't a solid plan. And there are a couple, and I'm going to share them with you because I'm just here for a solution, not to define the problem, because we know it's there. All the neighbors know it's there. And the bus knows it's there when they're held back on Manaloa for five to ten minutes more. So when a lady said Wilson School has it down to a science, there's a teacher who stands in the street and is there with a walkie-talkie, and the placards are on the dashboards with the student's name. And radio is up to the teacher when they call in, when they're ready to get in. And maybe they could have that. And I think that also they could park a block away or so and come in when they're ready. Also, there's a little green area in the back that can be easily modified for a drive-in and a drive-out on Ninth to Manaloa, and that's not being done. And it could also have a drive-in in the front on Eighth Avenue, but that's not even considered. And this one lady said, I live one block Diamond Head from Lehele on Lake Avenue. I dread coming home between two fifteen and two thirty, forty plus on all the days. And the other day is Wednesday from one fifteen on. It's every single day for decades. I did call and they said, I don't want to say what they said, but it's not the current principle, but the current principle has the same adopted attitude. I think that there's no one there, and everyone, the teachers like to go home. And the crossing guard, which is, they don't have one right now, but even when they did, the crossing guard only helps the kids across the crosswalk and doesn't tell the cars to move on, even though the crossing guard is an HPD employee. And then what they do, and I think it's really unfair, because HPD has a huge job, and they don't need anything more as simple as this on a daily basis. And they say it's up to HPD, which is really not, not, really, it's not a solution, and it's not fair to the HPD officers. So I'm asking for a resolution. I really don't know what you would seek is best. But after, I mean, at least three decades plus, I think it's time. And basically, the neighborhood members have been pushed back severely. And I will say one thing, there was a Turkey get-together. I lived two blocks, three blocks away, and they had an intercom that was with a high-pitched screaming MC. And I, after like three hours, I called and I finally said, can you like turn down the mic? And they said, no, we've done this every year. So they've been doing it for decades, and it's just an attitude that goes all the way up to the superintendent, because I even tried there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, okay, that's fine. All right, okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? If not, just a question for Lieutenant Nishimura. Just, is HPD aware of the issues at Lehele? I assume so.
Yes, we are aware of the issues, and our officers have been trying to work with the school administration to come to a solution regarding the traffic issues there.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other public input, comments at this time? Any other topic? All right, seeing none, we will move on to community updates from the Kamaki Business and Professional Association. Calvin, do you have any updates?
Yes, thank you, Chair and Board members. Glad to provide you some updates and some good news. On May 25th, the KBPA, as part of their Adopt a Park, Kamaki Community Park, did a cleanup. Would like to say mahalo to Representative Sayama, Chair Waters, and Staff Member Adam, Councilmember Say. The Kamaki branch of Territorial Savings Employees, Epiphany Church members, and Boy Scout Troop Eighty-Two, and just general members of the community that came out to help out. So we do this according to our Adopt a Park program to help beautify the park for all the park users from Kiki to the Kupuna. We also, as far as KBPA, have scholarships for the four area high school students. We'll be presenting that next week at a event. And like to recognize Alaya Urion from Kamaki Christian School, Joseph Asunsian from Kamaki High School, Malaika Saibayat Taeko from Sacred Hearts Academy, and Kyler Ogata from St. Louis School. So we're very pleased to recognize students who did their education here in Kamaki and definitely have an interest in our local community. And just a reminder, KBPA does these kind of activities because as a business association, we firmly believe without community involvement, community support, engagement with the community, that's still necessary for the area of businesses to conduct what they do for the good of the community. So that's kind of an update from us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Calvin. Questions for KBPA? All right, seeing that, thanks. Thanks, Calvin. Appreciate it. Our next community update is from Kapialani Community College. It's Carol Hoshipo online. Okay, all right, so we'll move on to the state of Waite Department of Transportation. It's Brian Kimura online.
Yes, I have no new updates. The two projects affecting this Kamaki area is still on schedule. Signal normalization at the Eastbound offering, Coco Head is still on schedule to advertise in August, and Garter and Shoulder, up in line to Inacoa, is still on schedule to advertise in September.
All right, thank you very much, Brian. Any questions for state DLT from the board? Okay, from anyone? Yeah, go ahead.
I wasn't, I wasn't going to say anything, but so, are you in charge of stoplights and stop signs?
On the state roadways, yes.
Like Twenty-First Avenue, Luauai, Pohua, is that state or city?
That's the city road.
Okay, thank you.
You can wait for the city representative. All right, okay, any other questions? If not, thank you very much, Brian. Thanks for joining us tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to presentations. So our first presentation this evening is on hurricane season preparation from the Department of Emergency Management. We are fortunate to have former board member Molly Pierce joining us online. Molly, are you there?
I am. Can you guys hear me?
Sure can. Thank you.
Awesome. So I'm gonna real quick share my screen. Hopefully I do this right. No promises. All right, can you guys all see that?
Sure can. Thank you.
Perfect, awesome. So hello, everybody. I'm Molly Pierce. I had the great pleasure of serving on the Kamaki Neighborhood Board for many years and then had the displeasure of leaving the Kamaki Neighborhood and having to leave the board. But I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit about hurricane season and broadly the city's Department of Emergency Management and what our department does and in some cases does not do, and what we hope that we can have residents assist us with. I'm going to apologize in advance. I have one-year-old twins, and if there's yelling in the background, they are eating their dinner. So my apologies. It's a little chaotic here, but hopefully it'll stay relatively calm. But let's just jump into it. I like to set the stage here, and I think most people viewing this will know that we're incredibly isolated in Hawaii, and that poses a very unique challenge in terms of emergency management. You'll see the radius of distance from Oahu to any, the closest point on the US mainland. That's the circle on the left. And then on the right, that's the context of the same point in Puerto Rico. So because people compare island to island a lot, and in some cases, it's true. Reliance on ports, things like that, but there's a lot of disparity. Imagine the amount of supplies and help you can get when you have that many people within your circle. And our circle is pretty empty. So that puts an extra onus on both emergency management and on the public at large to be more prepared. We just have to as a function of where we live. We are also kind of in a sweet spot for many different kinds of major hazards. So we have our natural hazards. We're going to talk a bit about hurricanes. We also have tsunamis, earthquakes, flooding, drought. We'll talk a little bit about drought as well, because there's actually a drought component to this year's hurricane season that could play, could play a role in another of the hazards that we sometimes face, being wildfire. That's something that we consider in between a human-caused threat and a natural hazard, because it's something that, it could be, it could be natural, but ninety percent of wildland fires are actually caused by humans, and most of those are by accident. So that's when we get into preparation. We can talk a bit about how that really, there are a lot of things we can do to really reduce that risk. And then, of course, we have kind of human-caused, the big scaries, civil unrest, terrorism, cyber attacks. And emergency management has a role in all of these things. However, emergency preparedness itself is not solely a government function. It's not the responsibility or ability of any single entity jurisdiction or organization. It's a whole community effort. We have everywhere from government to nonprofits, individuals. The private sector actually has a huge impact in community preparedness, especially in Hawaii, because our local businesses tend to be very kind of employee-centered. So they take the time to really help prepare a lot of their employees. This is a, everyone has a part to play in emergency preparedness. The role that the city's emergency management, or really any emergency management agency, if I speak out of turn, Paul, you can jump in at any time. The role of emergency management is not to do. The role of emergency management is to coordinate. The role of emergency management is to know who has what, who needs what, and how to get those things together. We plan, we prepare, we react, we respond. But we're not the owners of any of those resources in particular. We can be the credible source of information. We can be a convener of those community. All those elements that we saw on this slide, we can serve as that convener for all of these folks. But we can't do that alone. That is something that comes from a multi-layered government response and then a multi-layered community response. That's our cute little conductor. We like to say that we're the conductor of the orchestra, but we don't play any instruments. We don't have a bulldozer to open a stream mouth, but we know who does and we know how to get it. We don't have a fire truck, but we know who to ask for one. We're the folks who can put the pieces together. And we're part of a big picture. I'm going to jump through these animations so we can just look at it all in one, in one bit. You'll see in the teal here, that's the city and county of Honolulu. So there's, emergency management is one of the few functions of government that starts local. The primary owner of emergency management is the most local entity, and it makes sense. Local jurisdictions know the needs of their community in a way that a state or federal agency may not have kind of the granularity needed to know how to specifically respond to something that's happening in Palolo versus Mount Alani Circle versus right by Fort Ruger Market. Even that, those are different conditions within those specific little places that someone coming in from FEMA, they're never going to know. So emergency management really starts at the local. So emergency management really starts at the local level and is primarily controlled in that sense, so that we can have that, that tight connection to community. So each of the counties in Hawaii has an emergency management agency similar to D E M, the Department of Emergency Management for Honolulu. And then we have our, our big brothers at the state at Haime, the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. And then kind of the big, big brothers FEMA at the federal level. And all of these parts play together. So we, if something is beyond the scope of local management, is beyond the scope of what D E M could handle and the city could handle, then we request assistance from the state folks from Haime. And then if we need bigger, the big, big guns, or if we need money, that's a lot of times where FEMA requests come, because they've got the biggest purse. And so that's really where a lot of FEMA assistance tends to come in. So sometimes you'll see declarations of disaster, and those are primarily mechanisms to allow for funding. So that money can be used to restore systems and also can be used to help get residents and homes back, back on their feet. So we look at emergency management kind of in a few phases. There's the planning phase, which is not covered in this slide. All of this is, all of what you see on this slide assumes planning has happened. And also assumes for the, the potential failures in that planning. So there's the response phase, which is immediately in an incident and the immediate response afterwards. That's during the hurricane and maybe the first 12 hours after. That immediate period where it's still life safety, kind of getting, making sure that, that you stop the bleed. And then we have short and immediate term recovery. That's sheltering folks. It's keeping, keeping folks going, but not getting back to normal yet. And then long-term recovery is that, that transition into finding ways to make the community whole again. That's looking for, for more permanent solutions that short-term recovery and potential response may have, may have been in, in much quicker, quicker condition. Sorry, my animations sometimes jump around. I'm going to talk a little bit about shelter types in terms of hurricanes. And I'm going to use this to jump into kind of a discussion about hurricanes. I don't have a lot of slides about it. But I do, I do want to kind of talk that through, and I'm happy to answer any questions that folks have about that or about anything in this presentation. Hurricane shelters tend to be the biggest question that folks get, that folks give us about kind of how, how to prepare for a hurricane. And on Oahu, we unfortunately, our luck is also our biggest risk. We have been incredibly lucky. We have not had a direct hit from a storm of magnitude in essentially living memory. We haven't had the kind of destruction that a lot of places that are kind of in major hurricane centers have had. And what that means is that we, we haven't had to test. We haven't had to test our buildings. And so a lot of our, our buildings that we consider, the public would consider a shelter are actually hurricane refuge areas. So basically, we've had engineers look and they're the best we have. But we don't know their strength entirely. We, we want to provide something that's better than a single-wall plantation home with no interior rooms in a flood zone. So we know that they're better than that. But the best course of action for folks in, in preparation for hurricanes, and we'll talk about this in the preparedness section, really is finding a family member or friend or, or business, your business, or somewhere that is a, a safe and comfortable place to stay. Because it will be safer and more comfortable than potentially a, a school gym with 300 of your new best friends. So this is a lot of detail on this slide, but I will, I will leave it at that for now. And I will jump into, let's see. Frozen. There we go. Okay. I'll jump into what we are, nope, there we go, what we're hoping to accomplish. So in recognition that the, our shelter facilities are, are lacking. We have been going through and doing what's called a best available refuge area or BARA assessment and looking at publicly available buildings primarily. So state and city facilities, most of these are schools or park buildings. And determining their strengths and then determining what could be done with relative, that's reasonable to strengthen them, to bring them up to a higher standard. So we're in progress on, on doing that. We're doing engineering assessments on many of these properties in hopes of then requesting funds to retrofit them. So if you see construction in, in some of these areas, that's a good thing. We're looking to, to build these up and make them safer, stronger. Safer, stronger facilities for use. Let's see. I'm going to kind of roll through this, and then we'll talk a little bit about hurricanes. My slides are a little out of order, but it'll work. After a storm, a hurricane, or really any kind of storm, the city, there we go. The city will, like I talked about getting that money from FEMA. In order to request funding, we have to prove that there has been damage. We prove that we need it. And so we will ask residents, businesses, and really anyone in the community to report the damage to, to any structures that you're responsible for. So that we can collect that information and we can get kind of, we can use that to make a mon, a case for certain amounts of money for federal recovery funding. Because federal recovery funding, not only does it help rebuild what has, what has gone, gone wrong, it also allows for, there's a provision that means, that gives a percentage of that and makes sure that it is used for mitigation and prevention. So improving condition moving forward. So that's a really important part of this. We also ask folks, again, this is on that community effort about debris clearance. This is something that is, we can't get services to folks if we can't get through. And so this is something that we do at, we do ask residents, especially folks who live in places with a lot of trees that may come down. If there's something in the road in an emergency, help get it out. That's the real basics of that one. So, yes.
It's Paul. So if I may kind of chime in a little bit. Human nature is something happens and you want to clean up the mess right away. You want to get back to a sense of normalcy as quickly as possible. But what Molly's trying to say, and I'm going to expand a little bit, is what FEMA wants to know is what is the damage caused by the incident that occurred? In simple terms is, here I am today, my normal being, and something happened, hurricane event, what have you. And here's the result of that incident. If you can accurately document the before and after, that's really what you want to do. So as soon as it's safe to go out and document, picture, write down what happened, that can accurately show what happened from the incident. If you have things before that can show what it was prior to the incident, therefore you can compare the two, and that's how you get your delta. Damage assessment pretty much wants you to show what damages were caused by the incident. You had rain, flood, hurricane, what have you. That makes sense? We want the before, we want the after. The difference between the two is the damage from the incident itself.
Thanks so much, Paul. That is a, that's a great kind of expansion on this. It's true. And we actually, we recognize that this is a concept that a lot of people don't think through. So we actually have, we're in the process of rebuilding our website. And once it's rebuilt, we have this really great video that we got U H folks to make for us that actually gives folks a step-by-step run-through of how to complete a damage assessment that's directly related to how our city damage assessment tool actually works. But Paul's point to knowing the before and after is really key. In your emergency planning, and that's, that's the next section of this presentation, one of the key things to do is to know in your planning process, know now in blue skies. Take pictures of your property, check your insurance policies. Know where, know what your normal is, so that you can then quantify what is no longer normal after an incident. So I'm going to pop back to, yeah.
It's Brian. So Paul just took up some of your time, but all important stuff. But I'm going to need to ask you to summarize and conclude, so we have, we have a number of other items to go here. So glad, glad we invite you back for a future meeting as well.
I will. I'm going to give you guys the highlights. This is all real logical stuff. So the three things you can do right now, make a plan, build a kit, stay informed. So your plan, sorry, they're screaming, is really, it's knowing what can affect you and what you need to do to ensure that your family is safe. Think about what makes your family, your home, your property unique. Know what your insurance covers, know what it doesn't, know what you need to take care of. If you have medical equipment that requires power, you need to have a plan for that. You need to have batteries, or you need to know where you're going to go. That one's really important. If you can shelter in place in your home, that depends on, on what your home's like. You can look at the homeowner's handbook. That can help you determine it. You can also go to our website, and we have some specifics on that. If you can't stay in your home, know where, which refugery to go to, or find a family member or friend. We talked about that one. Tsunamis, essentially the same thing. So this one is, we've got two different levels of kind of preparedness kit that we really hope folks can, can aspire to. We recognize that sometimes being two weeks ready isn't reasonable for everyone. But those who can prepare should, so that there are more resources for the folks who cannot, who don't have the, they don't have the financial means, or they don't have the physical means. Perhaps they're homebound. They can't acquire these supplies. So do what you can to help your neighbors. Also, in the event that you do need to leave your home quickly, prepare a go-bag. We like to have kids do it as a scavenger hunt around their house. Because most of these things you probably already have in your home. All of these are on our website. Then stay informed. This is the last section. It's the most critical. Know where to get good information. If you are watching only social media to get your information, make sure you're following the social media of some credible sources. We've got some really great accounts in Hawaii. They're not really great at verifying. So if you follow it for jokes, probably don't follow it for hurricane information. Follow local media, not national. Fox News, CNN, they're not going to know what's happening in Kamaki. Hawaii News Now, they're going to have what's happening on Oahu. So think through your information sources and try to get information from folks who are credible, knowledgeable, and would know what's going on. Last slide, I promise, how you'll find things out if there's no power, no cell phone, no nothing. We've got sirens. We talk about them a lot. They're primarily used for tsunamis, but can be used for anything. The siren does not mean run. The siren means get more information. So if you hear a siren go off, check your phone, check your TV. If you can't do either of those things, ask your neighbors. If your phone is working, we can send W I A S. Those are wireless emergency alerts. That's like the Amber Alert, where your phone starts screaming at you and won't stop until you accept the notification. We only send those when it's a real emergency. So if you get one, please take it seriously. And then there's also the emergency alert system or E A S. That's the crawler you see on TV or the squawk that you hear on the radio. Those are also sent in, primarily in conjunction with the wireless emergency alerts. So if they go off, they are also serious. That's it. We'll talk hurricanes as well if you want to, but we are running through time.
All right. Thank you so much, Molly. Appreciate all the helpful information and documented information. Really appreciate it. Any comments or questions for Molly?
Okay, so to help put a bow on that, a lot of stuff, Molly, take it seriously. Disasters start at the local level. So if something's going on, you're not going to call the state or FEMA. You're going to call your local. And you may call your actual local. You're going to call the neighborhood fire department. You have a fire. You're not going to call the, but understand what they cannot support, it goes on, on the, on the food chain. I, I work for Haime, and Molly and I have that relationship workplace as well. Really read a little bit, that be two-week ready is kind of a catchphrase, but understand what that means. If something happens, you need to be able to survive on your own for two weeks. And it's all your meds, food, or your pets, your children, everything. Pretend you cannot get anything from anyone for two weeks. That's the target. Doesn't mean you can hit it. Like Molly was saying, do your best to get to that point. And then we, I'm sure, may have money back for future conversations to get a little bit more information. But with hurricane season coming on up, it's just the time to kind of check yourselves out and make sure you're ready.
All right. Thank you, Paul. I think Becky had your hand up.
Becky, are you there?
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. Hi, Molly. Good to see you again. Good job. I, obviously, a lot of us have natural disasters on our mind. And I'm just wondering, in your opinion, if we were to have a scale zero to 10, how prepared we are in Oahu for disasters? I mean, I, I guess it depends on the disaster, you know, fire versus hurricane, whatnot. But let's just say that Maui was at a two, just in terms of scale. Where do you think we are in Oahu or Kamaki?
Yeah, so I don't think it can be put on a scale, because there are so many components to, to that preparedness. So I think from a planning perspective, we're, we're doing pretty well. I think our, our plans and kind of interoperability agreements and those kinds of things are, are pretty strong. We have, we have room to grow on those, and we consistently update. But I think where Oahu lacks, and it's where all communities lack, this is not a Hawaii-specific problem. This is a global problem, is that individual preparedness. Because it doesn't matter how good the plans are if those plans take into account individuals being prepared who are not. And unfortunately, given how the US government is set up, the local government, all governments are, we can't be all things to all people. So there is that, that requirement and, and, and real culianna of individuals to, to be prepared. So what we can do from a government perspective is we work with all our agencies, we drill. We practice all these plans as, as frequently as we can. We get everybody down in our emergency operations center, our E O C, pretty frequently, so everyone knows how the systems work. They know how to, to log in. We test everyone every month. We call their phones and make sure that they actually know how to turn the system on. So, so we do a lot of drilling and a lot of testing. But where there's always room for improvement is that community connection, is the rest of that colorful circle. And we've got some really fantastic partners, the food bank, places like that. But there's just, there's never enough resources to, to accomplish all of those goals. So I think if people are looking for somewhere to be proactive and to help build that space, it would be really looking at where there are those community groups, nonprofits, or even for-profits. If you work for a large company, those are places that are ripe for easy connection. Organizations that stand up where their whole goal is disaster preparedness, most of them don't succeed, because it's, it's singularly focused. The Bible study group that talks about preparedness for 10 minutes of every meeting. The Bible study group that talks about preparedness for 10 minutes of every meeting. They're way more prepared. The PTA that talks about what you have in your two week kit, because it's part of a recurring. Activity that's already part of people's consciousness. That's where where there can be a lot of of opportunities. So I think looking at ways to insert. Preparedness, insert that planning, rather than trying to start something from the ground up. Is a really good way to do that. That's also why we tell folks to start with a go bag. Because you can, if once you've accomplished that, like. Two weeks can be really daunting to someone to try and think, I'm gonna get everything I need to live for two weeks. And some some people just get choice paralysis. They can't do it because it's too big. And so start with the things you can do and build up. And so we look at that for the for like community preparedness as well. That's a really long answer to a.
Well.
Short question.
No, no, it's it's good. I mean, I just have this thought. I'm thinking of like the fire escape plans that I do, you know, with my daughters, like, you know, as part of their. Pizza coupon or something like that.
That's perfect.
Yeah, so I like I was just thinking like of carrots and sticks and I, you know, I know if you like. Install a hot water heater, then you get a rebate or something like that. Would there be a way that Hiko could give a rebate if you like upload? Pictures of your two week supply or something like that. I don't know, just like little things that.
I would love that. I would definitely pose it to them. I don't know if their budget can take it right now. But I definitely, I definitely love the idea. And they've got a pretty robust. Community, uh, community development group right now going to try and ease some of the frustration. For all the public safety.
Big jobs, yeah.
Sorry, still talking.
So we, yeah, so I appreciate all the information. Glad to have you back again for another session. And thanks for all the helpful information. We're gonna have to move on, but thank you for joining us.
Anytime.
Thank you to your kids for sharing you with us this evening as well. So thank you. Take care. Yeah, you see those in work as well. All right. Okay, so we're gonna move on to a presentation on the Kapilani Community College Olapua Building Renovation and Modernization Project. From McKenna White. What can I argue there?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members of the board and members of the community. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, great. Well, I'm gonna do my best to share a little presentation with you. Let's see if I can manage. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So again, my name is McKenna White. I'm a planner with Planning Solutions Incorporated, and we're working with Kapilani Community College and Omizu Architecture on the Olapua Building Renovation. And Modernization Project. It's of course located on the KCC campus in Diamond Head, Oahu, Hawaii, on this subject TMK 31429. Now, I know that all you folks are pretty familiar with the area. But KCC campus is located in the sort of Wailea Kahala neighborhood on the backside of Diamond Head. Between it and Kaimuki. And you can see up in the the right corner, it's its location on the island for anybody who's not familiar. And sort of one of the reasons that we're we're making this presentation is that. A bit unusually, the the whole of KCC campus is located within the city and county of Honolulu's Special Management Area. So. What that essentially means is that anytime you conduct. Development, construction activities inside the Special Management Area. You need to have a Special Management Area permit unless it's exempted for some reason. In this case, the work would require. Some sort of Special Management Area approval because it is in the SMA. Briefly, the project is. KCC is proposing to renovate and modernize the Olapua Building and its surrounding area on the KCC campus. The Olapua Building is used by KCC facilities and maintenance personnel for workspace and storage of equipment and material. Specific improvements that are proposed include minor exterior repairs, including to the asphalt shingle roof and rear of building trench drain. There's a series of internal renovations to the building, including AC and ventilation, roof insulation, power, lighting, roll up doors. The building is basically in the condition it was constructed in in the 90s, and so these are just sort of modernization. Measures. Then there'll be an additional attached office space and mailroom with air conditioning, power and lighting to support office space for two or three workers. They would construct an adjacent roofed cart charging structure. This is to charge the electrical carts that the facilities and maintenance staff use to move around the campus. There would be replacement of the metal roof on an existing utility shed that's adjacent to the Olapua Building. There would be a new access driveway for maintenance carts that would be adjacent to the road leading. To the building so that there's no conflict between motor vehicles and these electric carts. There would be repairs to the building sign, a new electrical vehicle charging station with ADA compliant parking. And finally, there would be some repairs to the nursery. There's a plant nursery adjacent to the building, and there would be repairs to the fencing and shade cloth there. So just to put you in the ballpark, this is what the Olapua Building looks like. It's a very modest structure with big bay doors. To allow equipment to move in and out. You can see in the foreground some of the electrical vehicles that the maintenance staff use. And you know, just on on the right side of the photograph, you see some parked vehicles. And then there's a sort of downslope and below that is the Hawaii Film Studio to orient you. This is the expansion area, so this these temporary facilities would be removed. And a permanent office space would be created there, as I noted before, for with space for two to three workers. And to put you in the ball text ballpark, I have. Detail construction drawings, but there's. Just to get a sense of where things are, this is Diamond Head Road is here on your left of the diagram. The KCC campus is there and this sort of dashed envelope in the sort of lower. Left side of the property represents the envelope for the Olapua Building renovation. And and modernization effort. Moving in closer now. From the top left, you can see little dash lines describe the work areas. The first one is the electrical vehicle charging stations. And then you have the new concrete path for electrical vehicles to access the Olapua Building. Then you would have the nursery repairs and the expansion area. Then moving right, you have the internal repairs to the Olapua Building. And then finally, you would have the electric additional EV charging stations and the electric cart. Charging stations and the maintenance shed repairs. In the sort of bottom right corner of this drawing. And that, I believe, is all I have to. Present, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions folks might have, or if I can't provide the information now, I can certainly get it. To Chair Kang in a timely fashion. So I I'm open to any questions folks might have.
All right. Thank you very much. Question, Audrey.
Hello. Yes, I just had a question as for matter of perspective. What is the building area that you're speaking of and the relative site area? For that building?
Well, you know, that's a good question because they're not modifying the size of the building. I don't have those numbers in front of me. I would be happy to get them from the engineer and or architect, excuse me, and pass them on to the chair. I. While I'm talking, I'm zipping over to my construction drawings.
I just was wondering, because I walk by there at least once a week, you know, exercising and.
Yeah, sure.
I I've seen that building and so it sounds like a really good project. I just wonder, I just wonder what kind of script footage it was.
Well. You know, it's a good question. I'm looking at the final bid drawing set right now. And looking to see if I can get you that, but. I guess what I would ask is if I could go through my plans and get that number, I can email to Chair Kang tomorrow. And he could provide it to you. Would that be an acceptable way to get that information?
Great. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Happy to, yeah. Any any other questions or?
Aloha McKenna, this is Pua from. Have a keyboard. I wanted to ask, is there a timeframe of? When the construction is gonna be done and if there's gonna be any traffic opportunities around the area?
Well, okay, so right now the timeframe is being settled on because there hasn't been a decision made by the city about how they'd like to see this. Proceed through the Special Management Area approval. So I I kind of alluded to it, but there's there's two different ways that you can. Do it. One is you get a new permit and the other way is that you modify an existing permit. Right now, the information that we've received through the scoping process. From the city is that they'd like to see this project handled as a modification of an existing permit. So that would move it. On a faster track than if it was a new permit. But we've only been contracted to conduct the scoping process, and so I couldn't really make any kind of like solid commitments about. When they intend to proceed with construction activities. I will say that I do would not, based on my experience with other projects of this scale, I would not anticipate any real. Traffic impacts to the area because the number of workers and vehicle trips generated by this kind of work is relatively low. There may be some material deliveries and things like that, but they have the liberty of scheduling those at times when. Traffic is at its lightest, you know, they don't have to be during peak hours. And those are usually like typical conditions laid on any permits and approvals that they would need to proceed. So it's a little bit mealy mouthed in the sense that I don't know exactly when construction would start. I will say that. Projects like this. It would probably start within 18 months to two years.
Okay, any other questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much for joining us.
It's my pleasure, and I'll get you those dimensions. Thank you very much for your time, folks.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, the bus route modifications, Department of Transportation Services. Is Kent on?
Hi, good evening. Kent is actually on vacation. My name is Jay Guza. I am the Department of Transportation Services. Hi. Thanks for having me. Let me share my screen. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. So again, yes, my name is Jay Guza. I am with the Department of Transportation Services. And I'm here to discuss and share some upcoming bus service changes that will take effect on Sunday, August 18th, 2024. So first, this. Doesn't, it it's mostly Kalihii, but there is some changes in your area. This is the Route 9. In purple here. And what's happening is Route 9 will be discontinued. So there's not gonna be any service on Vulcanberg and Center Drive. There will be alternate service on the other portions of Route 9. So the I guess the kind of the areas that will affect Kaimuki. The area of Kaimuki is routes 2 and 2L. That serves by KCC, also called Amal, Route 3. Serves KCC and through Kaimuki. There is gonna be a new Route 7, which I am gonna go over in a little bit. That will serve Kaimuki as well. So some of the other routes, I'm just gonna skip over because it doesn't really apply to Kaimuki if that's fine with you, just to. Speed things along here. It's our current Route 7, which only travels within Kalihii Valley. It's gonna be split into two new routes. There's gonna be a new Route 7 and a new Route 307. That new Route 7 is gonna travel between Kalihii and Kahala. And Route 307 is just gonna stay within Kalihii, traveling between Kamia Mia 4 Road and Kalihii Transit Center. So the new Route 7, the service areas are Kalihii Valley, Kalihii Palama, gonna go through Ivalay Downtown in Chinatown. Past Alamoana and Kakaoako. It's gonna serve Kaimuki and Kahala Mall. Yeah, I was gonna skip this Kalihii area here. The span of service is gonna be on weekdays, 4:30 AM till 11:15 PM. On weekends, 5:45 AM till 11:15 PM. And for the frequency. During the AM and PM peaks, this is 15 minutes, including the shuttles. The shuttles are only operating within Kalihii. So. For. I guess Kaimuki area, it's it's gonna stay at about. 20 minutes. And then base periods 30 minutes. Nights is gonna be 40 minutes. This is the new Route 307. I'm gonna skip this because this is only in Kalihii. And this is a map of the new routes. So the red here. This is the new Route 7. So again, through Kalihii Downtown, Kakaoako, Alamoana. It's gonna go on. Kapilani Boulevard, Wailei Avenue. And then down to Kahala Mall here.
Hey Jay, I think you're kind of dropping out there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not sure if you wanted me to repeat anything.
Yeah, you you were describing the red line there.
Okay, yeah, so just starting from Kalihii. Going through Ivalay Downtown Chinatown. Past Alamoana. And it's gonna go on Kapilani Boulevard onto Wailei Avenue and then through Kaimuki. And to Kahala Mall. Yeah, that's where it's gonna end, that Kahala Mall. It's gonna loop around. Okay, some other changes is this is the Route 9S within Palolo. And then the Route 20. So what's changing is the Route 9S will be restructured and renumbered to Route 200. And I'll go through more details in a little bit. And Route 20. The Kapilani Park Loop will be discontinued from the Route 20. And again, I'll go through some of the details right here. So the new Route 200. It's gonna take that Kapilani Park Loop. Portion of the Route 20. The service areas of this new Route 200 will be Palolo Valley. It's it will serve as Shamaad University, St. Louis School, Market City, Kamiki High School, KCC. Honolulu Zoo and it's gonna again take that Kapilani Park Loop portion of the Route 20. Hours of operation is 5:30 AM till 11:00 PM every day. And it will operate every 30 minutes. Okay, so this is the map of the new Route 200 and the modified Route 20. So again, Route 200. Alolo Valley, and it's gonna travel past Kamaki High School, Market City. Up through Sixth Avenue and Alohia. Where it will come close to Kapilani Community College. And then go down. Diamond Head Road and Montserrat. And then take that loop around Kapilani Park. Okay, other routes that will be changing. This is Route 18 and 24. So these routes are actually going to be discontinued. Again, similar to the Route 9, most of the roads will be. It does have alternate routes that serve those roadways. Also, some of some of the alternate routes are shown here. Again, for time's sake, I won't go through all of them. But you can see them here, Route 8, 4, 5, 6, 8, 13, and 102. Route 24 will be discontinued. So I just wanted to point out that service on 22nd Avenue, Winui Street. Upanini Street and Pokole Street will not have service. There will be service nearby. It's gonna be a lot of block away on Killawea Avenue. That will be the Route 2, 2 and 2L. So that's the route that goes to KCC and Kahala Mall originating in Kalihii. Some of the other routes, Route 3 goes to KCC. Again, that new Route 7 is gonna go through Kamaki and Kahala. Also wanna call up this new Route 23, which I will cover in a bit. Some changes to that route that will operate just between Kahala and Sea Life Park. So. I will go through that in a bit. And here we are. This is the current Route 23. Currently operates between Alamoana and Sea Life Park. So Route 23 will be restructured. So the segment to be segment between Alamoana and Kahala Mall. That will be discontinued. So some of the alternate routes for this will be routes 2 and 2L. That will cover the Waikiki, KCC, and Kahala segment. Again, that new Route 7, which hits Alamoana, Kamaki, and Kahala. And then select trips of the Route 14. Which will cover Kapahulu and Kahala. And this new Route 23, it will. And this new Route twenty-three, it will extend into Inahaina. So this will serve as the replacement for the discontinued Route twenty-four. The area between Inahaina and Sea Life Park will, that'll stay the same. And then the span of service and the frequency will also stay the same. Okay, and this is the map here of the new Route twenty-three, serving from Sea Life Park. Covering two-way service in Inahaina and ending service at Kahala Mall. And this, there, again, there's other routes, but this is just an example of one of the routes that will cover. The portion between Waikiki and Kahala Mall for the Route twenty-three. Okay, and this is the map showing all of the routes put together. So the Route seven, Route two hundred. Modified Route twenty. And the new Route twenty-three. So with that, does anybody have any questions?
All right, questions for Jay? Yes, Mr. Love.
I wanna find out, since you're discontinuing Route nine. Is seventh of Kalihii Valley coming all the way toward Kahala?
Yes, it is.
Well, that's a long ride. Enough. So how is it seven gonna be traveling on? Kapilani Boulevard and then into. Into Wai La Avenue? And it won't go up to Coco Head anymore with the fire station?
Yeah, it's, it's traveling on Coco Head and then. Is this Pahor?
Yeah, so it's still traveling. So seven will make a right turn into Coco Head and go all the way up to Pahor. And, and from there, what, it will make a right turn into Eighteen Avenue? Or would it just continue to Killawea Avenue? That's where Kahala is.
Yes, it will turn, actually, it's actually gonna turn left onto Hunakai Street to Kahala Mall. And then it will circle around clockwise around Kahala Mall.
Yes, so circling around where the post office is. And.
Correct.
So in a way, you're still giving service to Coco Head and Pahor Avenue.
Yes, yes. But you're not going. Different route.
What's that?
Yeah, it's just a different route, but yes, not going to KCC.
Now, how do I get a hold of you? Because I'm not satisfied with the route to begin with. So how do I get a hold of you? Can you leave your phone number with Adam Do? He's.
This is.
Right-hand man, what?
This is my, can you see the screen?
If I, I can't copy it.
I'll leave my phone number in, or actually, my, all my contact information in the chat box. And then whoever wants it or needs it, they can grab it from there.
Okay, so. What you mean by the chat box to begin?
Yeah, Mr. Love, so we'll, we'll. He's gonna put it into the chat and then we'll, we'll get you that information.
Maybe you can copy the number stuff.
We'll, we'll get you that.
All right, any other questions for Jay? Oh, Laurie, did you have your hand up, Laurie?
Yes, yes, I would really like to know. Hi. Hi, guys. Miss, miss you guys. Anyway. How do you guys determine? How to change these routes, you know? Do you have like certain? Do you ride it and see how many people are on the bus at certain times? What my concern is for the transportation of students to elementary schools and stuff like that, you know? How easy, I mean, would it hinder them with all these changes done? Yeah? So that's my concern. Yeah.
Okay, we, we do look at ridership data. We do do ride checks. But so transit is not an exact science because we serve a whole bunch of people who, they all go to. Different places and they all come from different places. So. It, it's not something we know for sure is going to work. But we trying to cover the majority of people, majority of the public that we're trying to serve. So yeah. It will not work for every single person, but we're looking to serve most of the people. But we do look at ridership numbers to see where the highest areas of ridership are. And then the lowest areas of ridership, which if we have to pick and choose. We're usually gonna pick the higher ridership areas over the lower ridership areas to serve.
Even if it'll hurt some kids from going to school on time, or going home on time and stuff like that, you know? I mean.
Which, do you have a particular school in mind?
Well, you know, there's a lot of schools in this area in Kamaki, like Palolo Jarrett. Kamaki High School, you know, the Shamanad, UH, KCC, you know? So I hope that there will be enough buses going through. On the times that it's really needed. You know, I hate to find out that you guys cut it, cut a route because. The time between, you know, when school starts and ends, right? It's, there's a lull, right? So you figure, oh, no ridership, so you cut it off. You know what I mean? So.
I understand.
Yeah, that kind of stuff I'm concerned about.
Yes, it's actually especially for school service. We, and we do monitor ridership throughout, even. Just regularly, we're always monitoring ridership and, and loads. And if we do notice that a particular trip is being overloaded. We do add trippers just to provide extra service. So. If, if we do notice that, that a certain trip is being overloaded, we will add extra service to, to provide service for those, those kids.
Okay, and this is like done electronically, apparently, maybe seeing the fares coming in?
Is that how you do it? What do you mean? What is being done electronically?
Uh, how many people are on the bus at a certain time? By, you know, how many fares go through?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We, on our buses, we have automated passenger counter on, on every single one of our buses.
All right. Okay, all right. So.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your question.
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna have to move on. So thank you very much, Jay. Appreciate the presentation, all the information. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on to community concerns regarding student pickup and drop off at Leeho Leeho Elementary School. And we did have some information during the public input portion. But is there anyone else here for the agenda? So. James, do you wanna? Describe the response from the principal?
Yeah, for sure. Unless, Mark, did you wanna speak on the Leeho Leeho traffic? All right, so there's an issue that the neighbors are having with the traffic from, by the student pickup and drop off. You could be sitting in traffic, waiting to make it through the intersection for like twenty, thirty minutes and beyond. And it backs up like the. Lady was saying it. You can, it'll back up quite substantially. So anyway, so a lot of the community members in that area, they've been talking to HPD and the school. And they're trying to come up with some solutions that some other schools are using to control the traffic. Which one of them is the placard, you know, they radio up, you know, the parent is here, they bring the kid out. Unfortunately, no one from the school was able to attend. The principal, Dr. Alan Lee, is out of the country. On vacation, at least so. So I just wanna go over some things that he said that they were working on. He says that they are in discussions and saying about keeping two designated drop off and pickup areas. At the school, which would be on Eighth and Ninth Avenue. They send regular messages to parents to come at the approved pickup, drop off times. To be respectful to our neighbors and to follow the traffic flow patterns around the school. He found an additional crossing guard after their previous crossing guard retired. And unfortunately, that new crossing guard has since left the position, so there's no crossing guard. They've worked with Councilmember Se's office to request a traffic study. And this request. Asked them to investigate adding changing signage on Eighth Avenue, painting the curb red in the parking bays on Eighth Avenue. The impact of two-way traffic on Eighth and Ninth Avenue during pickup, drop off times, and installing signage in the middle of the road on Monalua Avenue. Reminding vehicles to stop for pedestrians and crosswalks. Apparently, the department's investigation found that the new sign was needed on Eighth Avenue. And as of a few weeks ago, replacing these signs, we're still in the works. No other changes will be made as a result of the traffic study. And they've also been working with the Honolulu Police Department on a current plan to partner with the department's Community Traffic Awareness Program. For the next school year to better communicate with families picking up and dropping off at the school. So basically, they're trying to do something on their part, but the community members are kind of. Not like at a breaking point, but it's just kind of ridiculous at a certain point when you can't get to your own property. Because there's so much traffic by poorly managed traffic flow. Unfortunately, one of the main community members who's kind of spearheading, finding solutions, couldn't be here tonight. So I'm not sure if anyone else has anything, but. I think it'd just be like an ongoing discussion at this point.
Thank you very much, James. Any, any other questions or comments on this? Does it make sense to invite, I guess, the. The main person who's concerned about this as well as the principal together at one meeting? Okay, so we'll try and, try and get them, hopefully they can work something out on this. Okay, appreciate it. Thanks for updating us on that. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the Hawaii International Film Festival. The HIF administrative office has relocated to Kamaki. Glad to hear that. Is Anderson Lay on by any chance? Anderson, thanks for joining us. Appreciate it.
Hi, hello everyone. Thank you board for inviting me here. And my name is Anderson Lay. I'm the Arts Six Director. For the Hawaii International Film Festival, HIF for short. Just a couple few months ago, we moved to our administrative office to Kamaki on three, five, one, two, Wai La Avenue. Next to the Apa Landscaping and. Professional Image. We're very excited to be here. I grew up in Kamaki, so it's kind of great to come back to the neighborhood. So our administrative office is basically, that's what it is, but you know, it's essentially a storefront that we're still converting and figuring out what they have to do with the space. But ideally, it's gonna be a mixed, mixed-use space. We just hosted a panel last, last, last week. And in the Nerguay Fest Pat, we did something with the Indigenous Film Academy of Taiwan. Also, Oceania groups talked about, you know, native sovereignty and storytelling, whatnot. Allyship within the Asia Pacific region. So, you know, we are very excited to be here. We wanna really. You know, install our roots and foundation here at HIF. You know, our main venue, theatrical venue is down the street at the, it's all Kahala Theaters. So our, our, this is gonna be our forty-fourth edition of the festival. We are, our festival dates are gonna be October second to thirteenth in, at Kahala. Hundred percent of the festivals at Kahala. And we go to the rest of the month to the west side and also to the outer islands as well. And, you know, HIF's foundation is to promote cultural understanding between Asia Pacific and, you know, the west. And, you know, we, aside from just showing, we have basically. Three pillars of the festival, you know, exhibition was the film festival. We show films from around the world. We also champion and nurture. You know, local filmmaking and also Kanakamali storytelling as well. Very exciting. We call it the Kanakamong New Wave of filmmakers and seeing a lot of filmmakers come out of HIF. But also go to the, you know, outside to major festivals like Sundance and Berlin and Toronto. But anyway, again, so three pillars are exhibition, education, we're investing in, you know, the next generation of filmmakers. But also bringing media awareness to campuses all across the state, actually. And we work with the, with, with middle school and high school students, where we actually have. A festival in the spring called OPLF, it's a youth film festival, and which also have it at Kahala as well. And thirdly, we have, our third pillar is industry, which we have a suite of master classes and workshops. To really, not only really promote kind of sustainable jobs and workplace development here in the film and TV industry. It could be anywhere from like working on set, but also working at home. Through, you know, being a film critic or also maybe being a, a voice actor for anime or whatever, you know, like there's a lot of. You know, advantages of, of working today, you know, we, we're on WebEx right now, so a lot of remote working is a. There's a lot of opportunities regarding that. You don't have to be in Los Angeles or New York to even work in the film industry, right? So. But, you know, I think aside from the festival, we really wanna change our, I'm like, not just having the festival, just be. Happening only in the fall, even though that's the main kind of big top show we have. We wanna really kind of, you know, be a year-round organization with the. You know, master classes in Kamaki and maybe micro cinema. Presentations, also, you know, a customer, a customer from the Kamaki Community Park, having outdoor screenings, you know, for family days or whatnot. So, you know, we are, you know, kind of, we're still, we're just, you know, just moved here. We're just wanting to. Kind of say hi and also, you know, meet our neighbors, also work out, you know, work. Approach KBDPA and also keep it Kamaki. We see what we can do when it comes to partnerships, synergy, you know, like we have a membership where we can maybe, you know. incentivize membership by partnering with our organization, maybe coupons or discounts, whatnot. So. But we're very excited to be here. I have some. Postcards here regarding the festival that we drop it off here. And, yeah, for all the information, our website's at. At hif.org, H I F F dot org. You can find all the information there at the festival, about the festival and our organization. And, yeah, we, we look forward to setting our, our roots here. And, you know, watch out, like, you know, save the date for October festival at Kahala Theater. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Anderson. Appreciate it. Welcome to the neighborhood. Thank you. All right, so it is seven fifty-eight PM, and so we have this room to about eight thirty, excuse me. Okay, Becky, do you have a question?
Hi, yes, I just wanted to comment for Anderson. I was just really eager and excited to hear that their presence is here. And I did notice that Adori Yu is here. And I don't know if HIF is aware or involved in any of the efforts of the Friends of Queen Theater. And I pulled out this information from Elizabeth Garrison, who presented at our neighborhood board meeting a couple months ago. And her efforts to. Get grants and get the Queen Theater renovated and back to its original glory. And it just seems like if HIF's in the neighborhood, you know, how amazing would it be if they could do showings in that theater? So, I don't know, I just wanted to maybe catalyze the discussion. It, it seems like this is exactly the sort of thing that we could see in Kamaki. But thanks for coming, Anderson. Happy to see you're here.
Very much. And we're very, very aware with mutual conversations. We go. So, you know, a lot, you know, lots of conversation about that. So, thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you, Anderson. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Okay, so we're, we're at eight o'clock, so we have this room to eight thirty. So we're gonna move on to the elected officials' reports. First off, Mark Wong.
Good evening.
I'm going to start with the mayor's newsletter. You can go to the honolulu.gov website, um, slash mayor. And, um, I'm just going to cover some of the highlights of the, this month's newsletter. Now, the big one is that the city has created a new department, the Ocean Safety Department, which is part of the old, uh, Emergency Services Department. There are about two hundred and seventy-plus, um, ocean safety officers that are already in that department. And they will be, uh, in the process of splitting off to, to create that new department that focuses on, on our beaches and the ocean. Um, also some announcements about trying to beef up the nine-one-one system, which is actually a statewide system. But, um, the city does participate in that, and there have been issues with the ability to handle the incoming costs. So they're looking at a system that will call people back. Uh, you have a chance to leave a message and they will, uh, call you back when they're, they're free. Molly talked a lot about the preparedness for emergencies, but that, uh, there's more resources listed in the newsletter this month. Also discussion about the, uh, Public Safety Power Shut-Off Program of HICO. But that really affects the, uh, the west end of, uh, Oahu, so I'm not going to really talk about that. Um, there's going to be the final, uh, town hall meeting with the mayor tomorrow, but it's in Waialua. I don't know how many of you want to drive out there for that, but, uh, I will be out there. So if you want to see me, uh, join me at seven o'clock tomorrow in Waialua. And, uh, finally, uh, Department of Parks and Recreation is looking for summer fund volunteers, as they do every year. Uh, it can be college students or graduating high school seniors, or basically anybody that's in that, in that age range. Um, it pays a minimum of sixteen dollars an hour. So you can go to the city website under Departments, Department of Parks and Recreation, and click on, um, applications for the twenty-twenty-four summer fund staff. And of course, if you have kids, a little later, there are going to be applications for the, the kids to participate in these programs. Very, very popular. Thousands of kids participate every summer. And finally, I'm going to, uh, respond to some of the questions that we took back to the departments. I'm actually going to, uh, combine these two because they're both for, uh, traffic light and traffic signal issues in Kamaki. So the, uh, two areas in question are corners of Twenty-second Avenue and Pahoa Avenue, Luwai and Pahoa. And then, uh, Mauna Loa Avenue, but, uh, on the Twenty-first Avenue end. So Department of Transportation Services responded for both of these, that they're going to conduct, conduct an investigation, which they have to do every single time, to decide, uh, whether these, the traffic situation warrants changing the signalization or any other types of, um, changes, like putting in, uh, stop signs, um, crosswalks, speed bumps, that type of thing. So these studies are going to, uh, run until next year. And for both of these areas, DTS is going to get back to this board, with the status by the end of March twenty-twenty-five, so that, that should be the March meeting. In twenty-twenty-five, um, I, I regret that I will not be the mayor's rep in twenty-twenty-five because I'm retiring at the end of twenty-twenty-four. But your, uh, your next representative will, will report that back to you unless DTS themselves, um, to report that. So that concludes my report, and I will take any new questions.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Uh, Laurie, uh, well, hang on. Uh, any questions from the board? Okay, it's not Laurie?
Oh, yes, I heard about your retirement, so I just want to, um, make sure, uh, and, and maybe get the final answer on Sixteenth Avenue in Waiala, as well as Eighth Avenue, um, traffic signal boondoggle there. So what was the final report on those? I may have missed the meeting and missed the report.
So, you know, I don't recall right now. I thought I did report something on Sixteenth Avenue. Hmm. I really should go back and, and look.
Yeah.
Um, I know that one, one of the intersections, um, they did determine that there, they needed to change the signal, signals, and they, they were going to do that. But, uh, I don't have the exact intersection right now, so I really shouldn't, shouldn't say. I'll, I'll put that down for clarification, what changes, um, have, are going to be made as a result of prior traffic studies, and we'll get that to you in the, the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
If not before.
Okay, great. Uh, Eighth Avenue, traffic signals. You know how they, you know, can't see it and they always run through it and, you know, yeah, accident prone, blah, blah.
That was near the, the, the repair shop, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I, I, I will get a summary of that for you and we'll report on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so we're going to have to move on. So thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate, uh, everything. Uh, so we do have you to the end of the year, is that correct?
That's correct. December thirty-first.
Okay. All right. Thanks very much, Mark. Thanks for attending. Thanks. Appreciate it. Okay, so our next report is from councilmember and chair, Tommy Waters.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. I recently joined councilmember Se for the Kamaki Community Park Cleanup. That was on May twenty-fifth, organized by the Kamaki Business and Professional Association. So thank you very much to Calvin Para and his group. Those are really good turnout and, uh, you know, we cleaned the yard and painted, uh, the benches and other areas, so that was really good. I want to invite you all to the Kilauea District Park Beautification Project that my office is organizing on Friday, May twenty-eighth at two PM. Friday, May twenty-eighth at two PM. I understand that many people are working. If you can come down, please do. We want to clean up the sidewalks with power wash.
Is it June twenty-eighth? No, it's May?
Excuse me. June, June twenty-eighth. Yes, this month, this month. Thank you for the clarification. But if you notice, there's a lot of red dirt on the sidewalks, even on the walls of the gym, and we want to power wash, um, the area, clean up the windows. They have a lot of dirt on the windows as well as, um, possibly doing a little bit of gardening in the courtyard. Adam Do is willing to, uh, donate some plants from his yard, but also we're talking to the Department of Urban Forestry to see if we can get some plants also from, from them. You know, I also am happy to report that we put money in this year's budget for the reconstruction of the gymnasium roof, tennis courts, and at the district park. So that's in the budget and we have a project number, so we're hoping to get that done as soon as possible. Um, you know, my office, Amanda, my office recently attended the Mo, Mo'ou mai Nature Park Wildfire Meeting with HPD, HFD. And it determined that, um, there are a lot of, um, kiwi trees and other greenery near roof lines. And they suggest that we do a fire break between thirty to a hundred feet away from the homes. So we're working with Department of Parks and Recreation to ensure that that gets done. Uh, we recently passed Bill fifty-two, I believe it's on the mayor's desk for signing relating to large dwellings in response to monster homes sprouting up all over our residential neighborhoods. This would provide a more effective deterrent by increasing the penalty for those who construct or convert structures in violation of the land use ordinance. Instead of a five thousand dollar initial fine, it'll go up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And instead of a five thousand dollar per day violation, it goes up to ten thousand dollars. So I'm hoping that'll be a deterrent for people who are building these monster homes. Then Bill six, also introduced by me to improve public notification of the stop work order. You may recall on Sierra Drive, the workers continued to work despite the fact that there was a stop work order. So what Bill six does is requires DPP to go out and post the stop work order right there on the property, so there's no question whatsoever. You may recall, um, you know, Kelsey called me up, said that they would continue to work on Sierra Drive. I shot up there, called the mayor, called DPP, and we finally got them to stop. But, you know, they were saying they never got notice of the stop work order, so this hopefully will solve that problem. Um, I have a couple more things, but I'll, I'll stop there. I know it's now eight oh nine, and I don't want to hog up the whole time, but I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much, Chair Waters. Uh, any questions for Chair Waters from the board? And maybe? It's not. Thank you very much, Chair Waters for all the updates. Really appreciate that.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, so we're going to move on to, um, uh, councilmember Calvin Se's office.
Best thing. Okay, got it. Aloha, this is Poa from Councilmember Se's office. Um, I just wanted to give you some updates from, um, office. Um, so he has his June newsletter out, um, and I actually brought my news as well, because I know we had a racist. Right, Paul? Nah, I'm just kidding. But, um, I wanted to give you some highlights. Um, we do have all the websites on, um, on our report, and we'll be putting, we'll be posting it, uh, in your drive. Um, the two things I wanted to highlight is, um, we did, uh, Calvin Se actually did the congratulations to the Kamaki Bulldogs for the twenty-twenty-four OIA Division, two boys basketball champions. So Calvin Se actually did a presentation at the gym for the boys. Um, the other thing that he did, um, was empowering future leaders for the Pōkela Fellows, uh, program. And this is a program that has twenty-three leaders that are looking to go into governmental work. So these are, uh, this was a program that, um, Boss and, uh, other councilmembers went to. Um, other than that, it's just really quick and short. If there's any questions for me, uh, for Boss's office, um, I'm here for questions.
Okay, any questions for, uh, councilmember Se's office? Anyone else?
Um, I wanted to ask about the stoplights, or stop signs. Um, where are they located? Okay, different thing. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move on to, uh, is a representative from Governor Josh Green here.
Aloha, my name is Amanda.
Hi, Amanda, go ahead.
Hi, um, I wanted to address the question we had two months ago. I know we skipped last month, right? Um, I know time is short. So someone had asked the question about the name change for Hawaii State Art Museum. And, um, our very own Kamaki resident, Jo Kuramoto, who lives in Kamaki. Um, she's a commissioner with the State Foundation on Culture and Arts, and she provided this answer. She said at the end of September two thousand, twenty-twenty-three, the Hawaii State Art Museum was reintroduced to the public with a new website and a new look, with a new name. One of the reasons why is because there are other museums with really similar names and it was causing some confusion. Um, the name Capital Modern better reflects not only the historic location at the number one Capitol District Building, but also the vibrant contemporary art experience that people have come to love over two decades. The name change is also part of a strategic plan to strengthen the museum's brand, including working group of curators, art educators, community art leaders. Um, and, you know, with regards to FestPak, that was one of the many locations that participated in um, such an, an epic, um, event as FestPak. Um, the governor's, um, newsletter is on the website, and I encourage you to look at his, um, newsletter as well as the recent press releases. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Amanda. Appreciate it. Uh, any questions for the governor's representative? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Amanda. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming out. Okay, so we're going to move on to, uh, State Senator Stanley Chang's office or his representative?
Good evening. Um, I'm Teresa from Senator Chang's office. Um, so first I wanted to share his, um, monthly newsletter. Um, you can find it on his website at senatorschang.com. Also, you can sign up for our housing newsletter. Senator Chang shares news in the housing sphere locally, nationally, and also internationally. And you can sign up using the link in the chat below. Um, the Senate is convening a special, special session on June twenty-sixth to confirm four judges. Rebecca Copeland, Brian Costa, Diane Maderos, and Stephen Nichols. And the community is encouraged to submit testimony at, uh, or on the Capitol's website, and then also. And then, um, finally, uh, the city wanted us to share that, uh, we have about less than a year at this point for all residents to get their real ID driver's license or state ID. Um, and the real ID has a gold circle with a star outline in the center of the upper portion of the card, and you'll need it to board all domestic flights or enter federal facilities beginning May seventh, twenty-five. You can make an appointment up to six months prior to your card's expiration at any driver licensing center, um, on Oahu, and appointments can be made online at alohaq dot org. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to bring them back to Senator Chang.
All right, thank you very much, Teresa. Any, uh, questions, comments for Senator Chang's representative? Oh, yeah, sure. Go ahead, James.
Aloha, Teresa. My name's, uh, James Lo, and almost a year ago in August, I emailed, um, Senator Chang's office because there was a property on Pillway Avenue, thirty-six hundred block, that was completely overgrown, and it's a state-owned property. And I just want to thank you for connecting me to the proper folks at UH. Last week, they went and they worked with HUGS, which is a nonprofit on the property. And they had about a hundred and fifty people who volunteered from First Hawaiian Bank. They came out and they started clearing out the property because it was completely overgrown. It was growing over like our fence and my house and then neighbors' fences and things. Um, and there's abandoned, um, small, I guess, like old homes. So it's kind of like an issue with like homelessness. Um, so I just want to thank your office for helping me and, um, yeah, and also send my thanks to UH for going out there and cleaning that up.
Thank you. I do vaguely remember what happened, but yes, I'll thank you and I'll let UH know as well.
Okay, thanks. All right, thanks, Teresa. Appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to move on to State Senator Les Ukhara. Senator Ukhara.
Good evening. Today is a federal holiday, Juneteenth. Hawaii, uh, um, and Hawaii does not have, recognize that, we have to figure out. We have, um, to actually for Juneteenth, Juneteenth, um, the president did it by executive uh, a couple years ago, and, um, uh, it was the first added holiday since nineteen eighty-three, which is my visiting day. I can just add that in addition to the special session next week, uh, on Monday, the governor will be submitting a list of bills that the legislature passed that he may consider vetoed. Uh, and, uh, anything on that list is going to become law one way or the other. And then on July ninth, uh, is the possible veto override day. Uh, there's no call, can just show up. It's very unlikely an election year and, um, and, and then that would be, and if we don't do that, then for the House members, their term ends, um, at the, at the end of the election, at the election. Um, I have two more years, so I, and all of us have staff throughout, throughout the term. I have two, the Senate has two staff, um, so we do a lot of research in between sessions, um. And I'll be happy to take any questions. I know the time is short.
Okay, thank you, Senator. Any questions for Senator Ukhara? Yeah, seeing none, thank you very much, Senator. Thanks for coming by. All right, uh, we'll move on to State Representative Jaxson Sayama. Representative Sayama.
Oh, he's here. Yes.
All right, thanks for coming.
Board members of the public, yeah, I'll keep it quick. Uh, so we did just finish FestPak. Uh, this is a great event, bringing, uh, various island nations of the Pacific to Hawaii for the first time. Uh, so we had a great series of events, uh, offered to the general public. So I hope you were able to attend one of these events. Uh, next, we have an update on the Kamaki Library, uh, basically capital improvement project. Next, we have an update on the Kamaki Library, basically capital improvement projects. I know in previous neighborhood board meetings, there were subjects brought up about repainting the lines, repairing the parking lot. And so we have begun discussion with the Department of Accounting and General Services and the state's public library systems to figure out, okay, what kind of renovations are necessary and where are we in the priority list in regards to all state facilities? So I will keep the board notified of those projects. And next, I would like to give an update on the Queen Leal Colony redevelopment project I was working on. And there's some bittersweet news here. First, the bad news. I had commissioned a report with the School Facilities Authority in twenty twenty three. And they've done a preliminary report, which basically identified that the state has put too much sunken cost into Queen Leal Colony Elementary School property, about eight point eight million dollars within the past five years. So fairly recent. And so basically, that means they don't want to redevelop it until all of these costs maybe basically deteriorate in, you know, several decades. And they would like to continue to use that space, that property for admin offices for the DOE. The good news is, in doing this report, they had identified several new properties in the Kamaki region and the Honolulu region that could be repurposed and redeveloped for either teacher housing or for updated DOE admin facilities. Because if you ever been to the DOE headquarters near the Capitol, it is in terrible shape. And so these poor workers have to work in this environment. And so building new admin offices is also important. And one of these new properties actually right diagonal to the library is the state food and services offices. Fortunately, there is almost no sunken cost. It's been built about thirty two years ago. And so small property, less than one acre, but still, it could be used to house new DOE admin. So we'd be looking to potentially redevelop that property as well as other properties around Kamaki. And I will keep the neighborhood board updated on those projects as well. And next, I did host a small talk story here with some Kamaki residents as well as Honolulu residents about condominium governance as well as legislation regarding that. And so you might have heard in the news, rising cost of condominium insurance. So that's something that we've been trying to work with during the legislative session. Fortunately, the bill to do addressed some of those things to not pass. And so I'm trying to gather together members in the condominium task force as well as members of the general public to make sure that we are prepared and ready for the next legislative session on this particular issue. With that, I'm open to questions.
All right. Thank you, Representative Sayama. Any questions for Representative Sayama? Yes, Mr. Lem.
We got a tour or they're going to just let it go?
No, so right now, they're trying to figure out where in the priority it is for the state, all state facilities. Because there's other state libraries, the state building they need to take care of. So I'm trying to figure out, okay, how serious it is, how quickly do we need to renovate it, repaint it, and so on. Yes, I did take pictures of it and sent it to him. So. Yes, yes. Yes, so I will keep you updated on that.
Okay, all right. Seeing no other hands. Okay, thank you very much, Representative. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming down. Okay, so we have State Representative Bertram Kobayashi or his representative? Representative here? Okay, if not, is Congressman Ed Case's representative here? Okay, seeing no one. So we'll move on to announcements in the interest of time. Just very briefly, the twenty twenty four Heart Walk will be Saturday, August third, twenty twenty four. We've received some notices about some lane closures and parking restrictions. So please check our Google Drive on that. We also received word of new Disability and Communication Access Board websites to report the misuse of disability parking permits and also accessible parking spaces that do not comply with accessible design requirements. And we do have the websites on our agenda. So we'll move on to board business. Are there any corrections to the April seventeenth, twenty twenty four written summary of video record by any of the board members? Okay. Okay, so it's been moved to approve. Second, all those in favor, please say aye. Okay, those opposed, okay, motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Ho. Okay, so the next item in board business is the approval of a candidate forum co-sponsor by KBPA immediately following the board's July seventeenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting. So the Kamaki Business and Professional Association has approached the board asking if it'd like to co-sponsor a candidate forum for this district, again, which is being proposed for July seventeenth, which is the regular date of the board meeting. So the proposal would be just to convene the board for a very short meeting for public safety reports as well as public input and then adjourn and then immediately go to a candidate forum, which would be coordinated by KBPA. A place to be determined, it may be here, it may be potentially in another location close by so that we could adjourn and go. But that is the proposal on the table. Any questions, comments? Yeah. Yeah, my understanding is, and my understanding is KBPA is is going to primarily sponsor it with, you know, perhaps some assistance with some of the board members. Calvin, are you still on? By any chance, is Calvin still on?
Yes. Yeah, we'll ask for some assistance, like a moderator for the actual Q and As.
Okay, thanks, Calvin. Thanks for the clarification. Okay, so if there are other, if there are no question, any, I'll entertain a motion to approve that candidate forum. Okay, so moved by James, seconded by Pua, Judy Ann. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries. Thank you. So we'll update the board on that candidate forum. All right, with that, the next meeting of this board is on Wednesday, July seventeen, twenty twenty four, six thirty P M. Again, we will have a candidate forum thereafter. And the meeting will be at the right here, the Kamaki Public Library. So thank you very much, everyone, for attending. Appreciate it. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.